Good evening and welcome to the September 7th, 2022 meeting of the Gaithersburg City Planning Commission. First up on our agenda this evening is the approval of the July 6th, 2022 minutes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of July 6th, 2022 as written into the record. Second?
It's moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Next up on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which is AFP 9380-2022, covered patio porch edition at 940 Pioneer Beach Drive. Is there any comments, questions, points of discussion on the consent agenda?
None, no. Looks good.
Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the consent item on the agenda. Second?
Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed. Not hearing none. That passes unanimously three zero. Next up is resolutions, and presenting tonight from staff is Carolyn Seidman.
Good evening. This is final action for amendment to schematic development plan, application ASDP 9328-2022. The subject property, which is shown on the monitor, is a 7.39 acre lot that is currently improved with a 200,000 square foot office building, shown here. This is 9711 Washingtonian Boulevard. Surface parking and the parking garage, which is identified here. It is part of the Washingtonian South portion of the Rio Washingtonian Center. The applicant, Christopher Smith of Stonebridge Associates, submitted the application on June 7th, 2022, and the applicant is requesting an amendment to schematic development plan approval for the purpose of amending condition number 14 and the parking ratio of SDP 07002 prior to the development of a Phase 2 lab office building. This is just an artist's rendering of that lab office building. The property was annexed into the city of Gaithersburg as part of the Washingtonian Center Annexation Application X159 on July 9th, 1991 by the mayor and city council. At the time of annexation, the property was owned to mixed-use development, AnxtD. The subject property received schematic development of plan approval, SDP 07009, in October 2007, which permitted up to 400,000 square feet of office uses in two eight-story office buildings with associated structured parking. Subsequent to the development of the Phase 1 building, which was the first 200,000 square feet, an amendment to the SDP, ASDP 7423-2016 was approved, converting approximately 4,000 square feet of that office building from office to an educational use. A public hearing for ASDP 9328-2022 was held at the August 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. There was no public testimony provided at the public hearing, and we have not received any public testimony since then. Comments and questions discussed by the planning commission related to the shared parking agreements between the applicant's property and the neighboring properties, and the lack of definition for lab use in the city zoning ordinance. At the conclusion of the hearing, planning commission announced by motion the closing of their record on August 24th, 2022, the final action anticipated for today. And I will note, at the time that we had the public hearing, we had anticipated today that we would have the amendment to schematic development plan and a final site plan to look at at the same time. But the final site plan has been delayed slightly, so we're just reviewing the schematic development plan tonight. In response to comments received during the public hearing, the applicant has submitted a supplemental response letter, which is Exhibit 20, as well as two recorded declarations of easements related to the shared parking with the Spring Hill Suites Hotel at 9715 Washingtonian Boulevard and the veterinary clinic at 9401 Fields Road, and there are currently 23 exhibits in the record. So as I stated, the applicant is requesting amendments to two portions of the original schematic development plan. So first, it's the parking ratio for Phase 2. Under SDP 07002, the requirement to develop parking for the subject property was divided into two phases. Phase 1 included required parking for the Phase 1 office building and required construction of just a portion of the parking garage. This portion of the SDP has been completed, so this is the building that is completed, and a portion of the parking garage. Phase 2, which was approved but never constructed, was required to provide parking at a ratio of one space per 300 square feet for a 200,000 square foot office building and required the construction of the remainder of the parking garage. The subject property is currently improved with a total of 748 parking spaces and is subject to a shared parking agreement, as I mentioned before, with the Spring Hill Suites at 9715 Washingtonian Boulevard, which is over here, and the veterinary clinic, which does not show up, is not outlined, over there, bringing the total number of parking spaces across the three properties to 916 spaces. So the applicant is requesting a parking waiver to revise the parking ratio for the Phase 2 building from one space per 300 to 1.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet to better align with the parking requirements of a lab office use. And the demand for parking is further reduced by the reduction in the building square footage from a 200,000 square foot building to 150,000 square foot building that they are anticipating to build for Phase 2. In their statement, the applicant points to the Montgomery County and the city of Rockville's parking ordinances, both of which have codified parking ratios of 1.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet for life sciences, research and development uses in commercial residential and employment zones. And you can see in the parking chart that under the revised parking ratio, the development of Phase 2 would require an additional 105 parking spaces, which could be accommodated on a surface parking lot within the footprint of the planned garage expansion. That would result in a total of 1,021 parking spaces in the shared parking chart, which is shown here. That's what would be required, and that is what would be provided with the additional surface parking. Staff is in agreement with the applicant that the proposed parking ratio will yield a sufficient number of parking spaces across the three properties that share parking to meet the parking needs of all users. Parking ratio of 1.5 per 1,000 square feet for Phase 2 is consistent with a ratio used for similar uses in neighboring jurisdictions and is also similar to parking waiver requests within the city for similar lab and office uses. Most recently, was approved for 735 Watkins Mill Road, using that same parking ratio. And additionally, we confirm that the use and occupancy permits would only be issued for lab office uses. Any office, like straight office use that didn't have a lab component would not be conformist with the SDP, and any final site plan would require a site plan amendment to make sure that there was sufficient parking for a straight office use. So the second part of the amendment to SDP relates to a condition, condition number 14 of the original SDP. So as previously noted, the additional 105 required parking spaces for the new building can be accommodated in a surface parking lot, shown roughly in red surrounding the existing garage, and would thereby eliminate the need for a third bay of parking. This was originally the third bay of the garage. Should this scenario proceed, the currently incomplete east facade of the garage would be completed without any expansion of the garage, and the applicant has provided elevations of the completed east facade of the garage. Because the existing precast members were not designed to accommodate horizontal precast concrete spandrel pieces, an alternate means to finish the facade is proposed, as described in the architect's letter, which is Exhibit Number 6. And this is, you can see in the photograph, the existing conditions and how it would be finished if the third bay is not added. Alternatively, a third phase of development that was not previously planned but is now being actively pursued by the applicant would necessitate the expansion of the garage in conjunction with a Phase 3 building. So there's a possibility that this garage would be expanded in the future. But because this is uncertain, when this will move forward, the applicant has proposed a modification to condition number 14, which had required the completion of the garage, and the modification would allow for either completion of the incomplete facade along with Phase 2, or the application and approval of an SDP for Phase 3 within three years of the use and occupancy of Phase 2. Should this approach be approved, there would be a period of time during which the site would operate without the 105 additional parking spaces that are required under Phase 2. So we have modified the initial language of the new condition to ensure that an SDP is not simply submitted but is also approved within three years of occupancy of Phase 2. In their response statement, the applicant has noted that the existing garage is currently underutilized as a result of changing work habits brought on by the pandemic and a result of lease allocations for parking spaces. Staff is comfortable that the existing parking available on-site will represent, which represents approximately 90% of the required parking will be sufficient to meet the interim demands of the new lab office building should a Phase 3 be pursued. Staff is supportive of the submitted amendment to schematic development plan, ASDP 9328-2022. There is a draft resolution included in your package as Exhibit 23, and it is ready for final action should the planning commission so choose. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Carolyn. And just for the record, for anybody listening at home, our record on this is closed from a, you know, public testimony standpoint, so it's really just planning commission discussion and question, and then approval or not.
Correct.
Thoughts, questions, comments, concerns?
So we expect to see a preliminary next meeting, couple meetings?
Probably not next meeting, maybe a couple of meetings. It'll be an amendment to final plan would be, will be the next, and there'll be more detail to the layout of the surface parking lot and a couple of other site changes.
My two cents is landscape's going to become critical, right? As you see from the existing photo, there's a good bit of green there. But the, I mean, I think if we can landscape in that surface lot, I think this whole thing is wonderful, right? So the idea of shared parking charts, shared parking across a contained lot, right, with a reduced reduction in parking is, you know, we've talked about it for decades, and I think this is particularly good use of that shared parking chart. It's wonderful. Less asphalt, less, you know, unused building for parking cars. It's just perfect. Wonderful. 1.5 is probably still a little bit rich for labs, so I'm happy to see at least that number. But I think the critical component is how do we screen that, this new lot that's going to take away a good bit of green.
So the lot will have a 10% landscaping requirement, just like any other surface lot, and we'll...
So really, I'm talking about the edge of that lot?
Yeah.
Not internal shading of the asphalt, but the edge of the lot. How do we, how do we create as attractive an entry off the ramp into, you know, that whole neighborhood, the whole crown, you know, Washingtonian neighborhood, particularly, you know, if this is two of three, right, and it may come back with structure, you know, we want to plant some of these trees now so that there's a mature screening in the future.
There's a lot of overgrown stuff on that ramp right now.
Yeah, it's really thick, but all the more opportunity to put something in there that's professional. And, you know, obviously, the lab, the company that's going to inhabit this space, this is their, to them, probably a back door, but it's going to be the front door to most of the people coming to invest, to work, to, you know, take part in whatever the trials are. So it becomes a critical component.
Is there any discussion about change in lighting for the surface lot? Will the lighting be similar to what they have?
Yeah, well, that would be something that we would look at during the amendment to final plan. They would certainly have to meet all of the lighting requirements for the new surface lot. Nothing in the garage that's existing right now would change as part of this. It would just be the addition of the surface parking lot.
And any discussion, in the past, we've, when it comes to these garages, multi-level garages, we've tried to disguise them in other ways, with some external artwork or trellising or things like that. I know this has been around a while, this particular garage, but is there any, has there been any discussion, or should there be any further discussion about elaborating on that concept of, you know, just trying to make it a little bit less of a bunker-like structure?
Yeah.
And more interesting, because it is a major entranceway into the city.
We have not had that discussion. The garage, as it's currently designed, has been approved, and they would not be required to do anything new with it if they built it as constructed right now. If a Phase 3 comes in and there are changes, we could take a look at the garage then.
I think most of, most of our comments from when we reviewed this initially, and I think looking at the plan, are all the detailed final site plan levels from a, from a high-level schematic, you know, the moves they're making on the site. I think I see no issue with it. I think it's, Matt said it's great. I think we'll dive into the nitty-gritty, what plants go where, what colors and materials go where when we get the final site plan.
Yeah, fair warning. Landscape is within purview of this change, so we're going to be focused on that, and potentially lighting in the garage. Understanding the constraints of gravity and all that kind of fun stuff, you know, there's some opportunity for some up lighting on those, or down lighting, however you want to do it, on those piers, you know, just something to give it a little texture, make it more exciting than the rear end of a bunker.
It's my architectural terrain.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Carolyn, is there a recommendation, or is a draft motion to just adopt?
Yeah, you have a draft resolution of approval, and that, the staff has recommends approval of the draft resolution. And there's really just the one condition now. It's a modification to condition number 14, but now it becomes condition, just one condition of the new ASDP.
Is there a motion?
Sure. Chairman, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record, and the findings and the final staff analysis, move that we approve ASDP 9328-2022, associated parking waiver, and adopt resolution PCR ASDP 9328-2022, with the one condition is ready to the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you have a second at all, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, hearing none. The motion carries three zero. Next up on our agenda tonight is ASDP 9338-2022, the labs at Watkins Mill Center, and presenting tonight from staff is Jasmine Fellers. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. This is a public hearing on amendment to schematic development plan application ASDP-9338-2022. As shown on the screen, the subject properties are located within the Watkins Mill Town Center Development and its own MXD. The applicant's requesting to reallocate office and retail density within previous approved buildings within the urban core, which was part of schematic development plan application SDP-805-002. The application was presented to the mayor's city council as a courtesy review during their July 18th meeting. The council deemed the application to have a minor effect and directed the planning commission to hold a public hearing and make a final decision on the amendment. The hearing was duly advertised on the August 18th and August 25th in the Washington Post and published on the city's website on August 16th. At the present time, there are 29 exhibits in the record files. There are reference in exhibit lists in the files. Individual exhibits may be reviewed on the city website and at city hall during regular office hours. Any objections to the receipt of any exhibit should be noted prior to the closing of the record. Otherwise, they'll be deemed evidence, and I will have the project team start the presentation this evening.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stuart Barr with the law firm Lurch, Early and Brewer in Bethesda, Maryland. Our firm is privileged to represent our client, Trammell Crowe, on this project, and we thank the planning commission for the opportunity to present this amendment to schematic development plan and to participate in this public hearing. To my left, Eric Fisher with Trammell Crowe Company. To my right, Bill Brewer with Trammell Crowe. Just to give you a sense of how we're organizing tonight's presentation, I'm going to introduce the project team, then turn it over to Eric Fisher to talk about his company, Trammell Crowe. Then I'm going to discuss the project and the prior approvals and the proposed amendments. Then we'll have Bill Brewer from Trammell Crowe discuss the building and parking structure design, and then I'll wrap it up with our community outreach efforts and some final thoughts and the findings. And of course, we're happy to take questions from the commission. So our project team consists of Trammell Crowe Company. They are the contract purchaser of the southern portion of the Watkins Mill Town Center Urban Core. My firm, Lurch, Early and Brewer. Our Soltesh is our civil engineer, and Gensler, the architects and planners. So that's the project team. And if any of the planning commissioners are not already familiar with Trammell Crowe, that's all right. We have Eric Fisher here to talk about the company and to introduce the company to you. So I'll turn it over to Eric, and just tell me when to advance the slides, Eric.
Please. Good evening, commissioners again. My name is Eric Fisher, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Given the magnitude of the investment in this project, I felt it important to give you a bit of background about our company, our history, and our experiences within the life sciences sector. Personally, I've been with Trammell Crowe for nearly 20 years, I'm both a principal and managing director. And I've focused my entire 32-year career entirely on life sciences and healthcare. So life sciences and healthcare are a foundational part of our company. Trammell Crowe organizationally was founded in 1948. We are the nation's largest development and investment company, corporately headquartered in Dallas, Texas, but we have offices in 28 cities throughout the United States and Europe. Our fundamentals are interwined, multifamily, industrial logistics, life sciences, healthcare, and urban infill and office. With it, we're pleased to be here tonight. Our company has extraordinary financial footings. Currently, we have roughly $19 billion of projects in development, of which a large portion of that is healthcare and life sciences in any one of the five major markets throughout the U.S. I'm based corporately here in Washington, D.C. Personally, I've lived in the city of Annapolis for almost my entire life. Next slide. The tenants of our company are interwined, essentially being a good steward of the land, good steward of the community, and focused on development principles. We truly believe life sciences is a critical part of the ecosystem here in Gaithersburg and one that we are very much excited to advance. As with everything, we build to the greatest standards relevant to energy conservation, likewise, the core ethics that define our investors and our values of our company. Next slide, Bill. I hint a bit about life science experience, but it's one where we're operating in Boston, San Francisco, Chicago, San Diego, and then likewise, we have quite a number of projects that'll be underway here in the Mid-Atlantic, and likewise, in Frederick. This is an example of a typical lab that was completed approximately two years ago in Fulton Markets. It is entirely leased now. It's a project that really amplifies and gives a good example of our forward-looking of high glazing ratios, of good outdoor space, energy conservation, and likewise, integration of community elements throughout the project. As with everything in life sciences, we do this on a speculative basis. We believe that's critically important within the sector, likewise critically important in the state of Maryland and right along the I-270 corridor. And this is a good example of a project that was started with quite literally not a single tenant, and now we're sitting, building our third building in Chicago. Next slide. Some other examples, again, probably not of what we're going to be talking about tonight at West Watkins, but our Rieta Pharmaceuticals project in Dallas, Texas, is one that we're quite proud of. Likewise, two projects that we just recently completed in Seattle, Washington. There's a confluence in Seattle of tech and biotech, again, very good examples of integration of green space, terraced, lots of glazing, and really a level of connection to the greater community. Next slide, please. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague in development, associate Bill, to give an overview of the project.
Actually, I'll take that, Eric, and then we'll turn it over to Bill for the design. So, thank you, Eric. We're very excited to present this project to the commission this evening. Just want to make sure everyone's oriented on which property we're talking about before we get into the specifics on the project. So this is the Watkins Mill Town Center community, and which is generally bounded by I-270 on the northeast side, the CSX Railroad on the south with the Metropolitan Grove Mark Station on that CSX Railroad line, Watkins Mill Road. And so we're talking about a portion of the urban core of this community. Most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the Parklands Residential Community that's existing, so the urban core is generally the area in between Parklands Residential and the CSX Railroad. I consider the Trammell Crowe portion to be the kind of the southern portion. So that's the area in the red rectangle here, West Watkins Life Science Development. So that's the property we're talking about this evening with this amendment to schematic development plan. And then the rectangle that's yellow is additional property in the urban core that's proposed for mixed-use development, potentially multifamily and retail. And then I'm sure the commission's familiar with the future Craftmark Homes Project Stevenson Metgrove Sketch Plan that was reviewed recently by the city. So we just wanted to make sure everyone's clearly oriented. Of course, this is in the MXD zone, and this red rectangle is approximately a little over nine total acres. So we're proposing an amendment to an existing schematic development plan, so might be helpful for us to review the current approval, which was from several years ago. I don't know if any of you were on the commission at the time, but nevertheless, nevertheless, it's been several years, maybe a quick refresher is in order. So, and Watkins Mill Town Center in general has an extensive history, and there's a lot of background information, much of which is covered in the preliminary staff report, so I won't go into that in serious detail. But the southern portion of the urban core was approved previously for four large office buildings with ground floor retail, and the current schematic development plan is shown on this slide. And the total square footage of the current approval is 613,000 square feet of office, 62,000 square feet of retail. The four buildings are identified in the current approval as C1, C2, C3, and C4. Two of those buildings, eight stories in height, the other two buildings, six stories in height, and then a structured parking garage along the CSX Railroad, about 2,300 spaces approved in that garage, with the parking garage containing some retail on the ground level, about 10,000 square feet. So that's the existing, or the prior approval. So we're proposing an amendment, but what we're proposing now is very similar to the prior approval. Generally, the same layout, same uses, same road network. But here are some of the proposed changes that are reflected on this slide. This is the amended, proposed amended SDP that's shown here. Instead of four office buildings, two buildings that essentially combine the mass of the four previous buildings into two buildings. So this building labeled C2 is really a combination of previous buildings, C1 and C2, and likewise, a building, proposed building, C3, a combination of prior buildings, C3 and C4. So a maximum of 800,000 square feet total, building size. Some of that 800,000 square feet includes non-leasable areas such as lobbies and mechanical areas and so forth, and then 10,000 square feet of retail. So in each building, up to 400,000 total square feet, including 5,000 square feet of retail in each. Eight stories in height for each building, plus a cellar level for mechanical equipment and so forth. The structured parking garage is generally... The structured parking garage is generally the same along the CSX Railroad, five levels, but no proposed retail in the parking garage is proposed. We submit an updated preliminary subdivision plan that just reflects the appropriate lot lines, lot boundaries, and so forth. And so one main component of this proposed amendment is a transfer of density. So the proposed office portion that Trammell Crowe is proposing is larger than the prior approval, and the proposed retail portion is less than the prior approval. So to balance everything out within the urban core for density purposes, the amendment proposes transferring approximately 100,950 square feet of office from the remainder of the urban core to this property, and transferring approximately 62,494 square feet of retail from the property to the remainder of the urban core. The total amount of density within the urban core remains the same after the amendment. And then other parts of the plan, such as things like open space, are very similar. So this proposed amendment is consistent with both the master plan provisions and the prior sketch plan approval. I'll touch on those a little bit later, but there's a lot of similarities with what we're proposing now versus the prior approval. Want to talk for a minute about parking because we all want to make sure that parking works effectively. We, the applicant, of course, want the correct number of spaces to meet the needs of our office tenant and the proposed retail. The community, of course, wants to make sure that there's adequate parking, so there's no spillover parking onto residential streets. And then the city wants to make sure parking is adequate and meets the applicable standards. So we've looked carefully at that. The Watkins Mill Town Center Urban Core has a parking distribution table. It's quite complicated. I'm not going to go into it in significant detail because it involves different uses and different phasing and shared parking and so on, and I don't want everyone's eyes to glaze over, but suffice it to say that in connection with this application, we updated that parking distribution table, and the bottom line is that we are very confident, after studying it, that the proposed parking we're proposing will more than meet the demand. We are proposing some street parking. Overall, the parking garage that we're proposing is approximately 100 fewer spaces than the previous approval, but it's important to note that the prior schematic development plan required 2,721 spaces with 2,308 spaces approved. Our current amendment, under the city's updated parking standards, requires 2,428, and we are proposing approximately 2,203. Bottom line is that the ratio of parking provided to required is higher after this amendment than under the existing approval, so we actually think we're proposing a better outcome with respect to parking. Additionally, as we all know, and as was discussed in the prior project before ours, life science development generally requires less parking than traditional office uses. So with this amendment, we are also proposing an outer maximum building square footage of 800,000 square feet. If the building square footage is reduced going forward, as we move forward through the approval process, parking spaces may reduce proportionately, but again, bottom line, we're very confident that the proposed parking will more than meet the need. As far as the street network goes, no changes are proposed. The urban core road network received final site plan approval, and we're not proposing any changes to that. The network is generally reflected on this slide with a connection from Watkins Mill Road on Town Center Boulevard that's not shown here, but basically, everything stays the same with that. Two phases to this project, a west phase and an east phase. First phase, the west phase, up to 400,000 square feet of building and approximately 1,200 parking spaces. The second phase, similar, 400,000 square feet and approximately 1,000 parking spaces. So those are the two phases we're proposing. We are very proud of the preliminary design work on this, and to talk further about that is Bill Brewer with Trammell Crowe.
Thank you, Stuart, and planning commission, thank you for having us here tonight. So we approached the design process for this building. We really had three key principles in mind. The first was a design of best-in-class life science building. I think Eric touched on a number of the lessons we've learned around the country as we've designed these projects over the last 10 years, one of which is, you know, creating connections to the outdoors, and you'll see that as we advance through the design deck. The second key principle is we wanted to make sure that the building engaged the pedestrian realm. You'll notice that there's an emphasis on glass and some architectural detailing there to invite the public across the street to make it a real part of the neighborhood or urban core. And then finally, we wanted to focus and create an architecturally significant moment at the pedestrian plaza. We know this has been a longtime focus of the community and of the city to see that come to fruition, and we think this design is starting to embrace that. Let's see if we want to go to the next slide. So to talk a little bit about how we're trying to do that, first, with the mixed materials, you're seeing a combination of punch windows and curtain wall on different segments of the facade. On the solids, we are thinking about precast panels, metal panels, and then perhaps a little bit of fiber cement or terracotta. Given the size of the buildings, we want a healthy mix of materiality across the whole building to make sure that it's interesting and well-received. Next, I would focus you on the image on the upper right-hand corner. I think this is a good example of how we intend to engage the pedestrians, have cover from the elements, have high glazing ratios, and then we would look to focus the retail that's in our plan, likely around the central plaza. And then the tumbages on the bottom, you know, are not as nice. One of the things we wanted to note is just a feature of this building is going to be the screening. We will use almost 100% of the available roof space. The mechanical systems are large, they're imposing, and we'll have a roof screen between 18 and 22 feet at the top of the building. We will work diligently to integrate that into the facade you see below with, you know, whether it's, you know, lining of mullions or the precast breaks, but that's going to be a feature of the project. And then with the precast garage, we'll get into a little later about how we want to screen that, but it's going to be a large garage, and I think our focus is on really creating a couple moments of architectural interest around the stair towers. So we'll see that in more detail. Next slide, please. So here you have the pedestrian plaza. As I just mentioned, we think the natural location for some of the retail would be flanking this on either side, so you create a pedestrian zone that would be reflected. The mixed-use portion of the urban core, the current design, has this as a complete circle, so we would expect to see that retained moving forward. Above, you have a terrace which setbacks, which creates moments of outdoor space for the building tenants, and this we're visioning as 100% curtain wall at the moment. And then on the wings, you start to see kind of the field of the building. If you would go to the next slide. One other area of architectural interest or architectural focus are the opposite ends of the building, especially on Phase 1. This will actually be the primary face of the building experienced by most of the vehicle or traffic into the site. We want to make sure that that has unique features. You're seeing that through a series of large balconies, along with, again, an introduction of curtain wall on that end of the building. One challenge that we wanted to note and something that we will be exploring intensely as we work through the final site plan is how to deal with the field of the building. The buildings are quite large, and they have really nothing around them of a similar scale, so all four sides are extremely visible. We think that we need to pursue a modular strategy where we can try and deliver a highly efficient facade system to keep down the price point while still providing an upgraded overall aesthetic. So that's why you've seen this very repetitious field presented here tonight. This will change as we continue our architectural study, but we are planning on retaining kind of this modular nature, and that's really to allow us to have all four sides of the building be as nice as possible. So that was the thought process there. Next, we have the garage. So we believe that the best screening system for a parking garage of this size is dense plantings in front of it. We think that that's going to give you, from the pedestrian viewpoint, the most coverage. What we've done is we've made sure that we can accommodate a double row of trees. So this, we worked through with our civil engineer. So what you're seeing is a typical street scape, which would match prior approvals, and then we've set the garage back far enough to accommodate a row of Leland Cypress. The Leland Cypress, you know, is a 12-foot diameter, can reach up to 50 feet, which would almost cover the top of the garage at max build-out. We're looking at a 50-to-60-foot garage height, so we're getting almost complete coverage there. And then the last slide, I mentioned this previously, but we do see a need to have moments of kind of upgraded architectural expression for the garage. This is just one example of how we might accomplish it. It's a green screen that's paired then with an exposed stair element, which we would treat with a separate and distinct palette of materials, as well as with architectural lighting for both wayfinding and aesthetic purposes. But we think that's the best way to treat the overall garage, a green screen with then punches of architectural expression. So with that.
Thank you, Bill. So let me touch on our community outreach efforts. So we, or even though we, the applicant, feel that the proposed amendments or changes to the prior approvals are fairly modest when compared to the prior approvals. The overall project is significant, I think it's fair to say. So, and there's a lot of activity in the Watkins Mill Town Center Urban Core, so community outreach was needed and appropriate and warranted, particularly with Parklands community. So we wanted to have a meeting. We sent an invite letter on June 24th and posted signs on the property announcing the meeting. We created a webpage, and then we hosted the meeting on July 7th. It was a virtual meeting, very well-tended, and we did our best to present the project information and answer questions. And then afterwards, we tried to collect as many email addresses as we could and followed up with the presentation materials and recording of the meeting for everyone who was interested. And today and going forward, we remain available in case there are any further questions about the project or if community members want to discuss anything about it. This is the last slide we have tonight. Just to say, we are very excited to be moving forward with this project. It really fulfills the vision for this location. This will help build out the proposed road network within that area and will really activate the urban core. Let me just touch on the findings very quickly without belaboring them. The schematic development plan is substantially in accord with the approved sketch plan. The approved sketch plan reflects a high-density office, retail, and high-density residential for the urban core, so we're definitely in accord with that. The plan also accomplishes the purposes, objectives, and minimum standards of the MXD zone and other requirements of the city code. All that's in our application materials. I'm not going to go through every standard there. The plan's in accord with the area master plan. The master plan generally calls for mixed-use residential office, commercial. It will be internally and externally compatible and harmonious with existing and planned land uses. The design is very similar to the previous approval and compatible in character with existing and proposed residential and commercial uses. Public facilities will be adequate. Again, there's no change to the overall density within the urban core. That will remain the same. We talked about the two phases, and then lastly, the plan needs to be in the public interest, and we think emphatically it is. It's consistent with the city's strategic plan, satisfies all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the MXD zone, and all other applicable city regulations. It's compatible with existing and proposed surrounding uses, substantially complies with the city master plan, and so with all that taken into consideration, we believe the amendment to SDP application is in the public interest. So we're asking for the planning commission's approval of the amended SDP so that we can move forward with final site plan approval. And with that, all of us are happy to take questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Couple of points to note. This evening is a public hearing only. Our action tonight is simply to hold the record open and give the public ample time to submit testimony and comments to the record. Where, assuming the rest of the commission agrees, we'll have a further hearing for actual action on that. So for everyone listening at home, if you are listening and logged into Zoom, Greg's keeping an eye on the Zoom, and we will get to a period to hear from the public if anyone's interested to present testimony tonight. But as always, testimony is welcome in writing via the email address. So with that, questions from the commission? You want to start?
Question about the garage and its location to the mark station. Will there be any parking available for commuters using the mark station, which is directly opposite the garage? And if so, any plans for enhancing or making access to the mark station available to the public or accessible? Right now, it looks like there's a big garage structure, station's right there, and it's sort of blocking the way except for that little narrow, what appears to be a street that goes through there. Not sure what it's called, let's see. Parkview Avenue, I believe it is, that goes up to the station?
So I think we can start with public access to the garage. So it is our intention to allow public access to the garage. The majority of it would be reserved for tenants of the building, and then the public parking spaces would, you know, be pay parking spaces. In addition, I believe, you know, one of the requirements of this is that we would accommodate up to 800 additional spaces to be developed or to be paid for by the public for commuter parking for that mark station. So to the event that that option was exercised, then that would, you know, be the majority of the parking.
So just, Bill, let me jump in. So under the previous approvals, when a potential station for the corridor city's transitway station was proposed, there was a condition that allowed the state to exercise the ability to add, I think it was 800 parking spaces to the garage, but at no cost to the applicant. Actually, in light of the changes to the proposed corridor city's transitway project, and I can go through those if the planning commission needs me to, but given that there's no immediate station proposed there, we're asking for actually elimination of that condition. We just don't feel there's the need for the CCT. As far as the mark goes, there is the surface lot on the other side of the tracks, and to my knowledge, there's no, that surface lot is not full. But whenever I've been there, if there is a need to provide additional parking to serve the mark rail, we can certainly discuss that, but right now, there's not an immediate plan to propose spaces in our parking garage for the mark rail station.
But there is plan to have publicly available pay spaces in the garage for any use, correct?
For retail, for the retail that we're proposing, correct?
So same subject, but, you know, just that pedestrian path for the homeowners, for the office users, whoever's coming off of that mark and coming to your side of the tracks, we're going to want to see, obviously not at the SDP level, but we're going to want to see at the plan level, how that's solved, not just solved, but celebrated, right? So, and my assumption is a covered pathway at least through the garage, you know, so that's the loss of four spaces or something, you know, to get folks across that garage could be a really great way to, you know, good lighting, good color, four spaces lost, get them through that garage undercover would be wonderful. So celebrating that pathway is really the goal, right? And then I would think, you know, part of that might be realigning where your stair, not realigning where your stair towers are in your notch in your long building, but then I'd love to look at that point at the viability of a via, right, to get through this long, you know, train of a building. There's two of them, right? So there's three penetrations instead of one. I think you did a great job of re-centering it in the middle. I think that's great, makes a great vista. Stair tower's in the right spot, but if there was a one-story via where the other two breaks are in the midpoint of those two buildings, you could get pedestrians through there, and it wouldn't be quite as much of a hike, depending on where you're headed, where you parked, obviously, you know, where you live on the other side of you. And then hopefully, obviously, in the near future, you'll have a complement that probably won't be as nice as this, but you'll have a complement behind you that'll have a lot of, you know, through traffic, right? So making sure those pedestrian pathways are just as glorious as they can be. So architecture is wonderful. Planning, I think, is- Planning, I think, is, is better than it was. Uh, the only thing I see missing here is these little pedestrian pathways. So getting folks from the tracks all the way through to the homes needs to be considered, you know? And obviously you don't control that immediate piece, but we want to be ready for that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I've got a couple sort of direct questions. First off, you know, we're looking at the southern portion of this, uh, urban core. We're transferring uses and, and area from one side to the other. Very sort of elementary question. I'm assuming you guys own the entire site or do you, does Tramal Crowe only own the southern portion?
The, the, we are the contract, Tramal Crowe's the contract purchaser of the red rectangle shown here.
Okay, so you're, you're transferring site plan use and density off of your site onto the other half of the site that someone else owns at this point?
The, the seller, the current seller to Tramal Crowe owns the yellow rectangle, the other portion of the urban core.
And I'm assuming since we're here tonight that they're in agreement with taking those uses on, we're not, we're not, we're not offloading use that you guys don't want dumping it on to somebody else to deal with later.
No, we, we've been working very closely and collaboratively, yes.
Just checking, cause that, cause that leads to really my next question. So looking at the table that's in the, in the submitted documents, we're talking about, you know, total density on your property of around 800,000 square feet for between office and retail, but you're asking for 10,000 square to reduce your retail to 10,000 square feet. So i- if my math is right, and tell me if I'm wrong here, eight-story building, 800,000 square feet, you've got 100,000 square foot footprint on the site, basically at ground level.
That's two buildings.
Two buildings, but split between the two buildings. You've got 100,000 square feet of building touching ground with 10, that, with only 10,000 square feet of retail. So 10% of your footprint on the ground at street level that pedestrians are going to be walking by is retail, based on the numbers that you guys assume. Is that correct?
10,000 is the proposed retail amount, yes.
Okay, so which is 10% of the 100, round number is footprint. And so I think that, that's getting, when we, when we talk about compatibility with the original approved site plan, where we had 70,000 square feet, which is, you know, close to 80% of the footprint, again, doing rough math on my phone here. That to me represents a massive change in the pedestrian experience and how this integrates with a true urban, you know, town center. And so I think what, what my biggest concern here that I'd like to understand more about is that pedestrian experience, right? People are going to be walking on the street. What are they walking past? Why are they walking, right? You've got all this great street frontage. What is it if it's not retail, if it's not something public facing?
Yeah, I mean, I, and Eric, please weigh in as, as you go through this, but one, one initial reaction, right, is it goes back to our comment about there's four sides to this building as we think about a 70 or 80% coverage with retail. You know, the retail environment's certainly changed since it was first approved. You know, we would, wouldn't think any type of project would be putting retail facing the garage, you know, and that, that is, you know, a, more of like a big box retail strategy, you know, something that was very deep where you, you know, you would have like the back or the rear of that retail space and it wouldn't really be engaging the pedestrians anyway. So I think there's something that is, just the market has changed and, you know, what we're thinking about on our, on our 10,000 feet is it's very pedestrian focused. It's, you know, quick service restaurant, full service restaurant. It's really there to help support both the community and then our office tenants above. Um, so that's one item. Uh, the second thing I would like to talk about is just, these are lab buildings. They are a little different than office buildings. Um, and we really see that in, in two ways. It's with the structure and then it's with the mechanical equipment related to the air capacity. Um, so we talked about the mechanical screen. Uh, we're going to cover basically the entirety of this roof with mechanical equipment to be running, uh, vertical penetrations for the type of retail that we think is most likely to come here throughout, you know, the majority of the first floor up the roof would, would cause great difficulties. And then on the structural side, you know, we'll be running like a 22 by 45-foot grid and trying to target like 4,000, 8,000 MIPS on the structural piece. So being able to control tendency to focus on a 60/40 lab split and really make sure that when we're thinking about retail users, you know, they, they fit in that more food service, you know, standpoint was our focus on that. I mean, Eric, I'd.
I, I totally get, I totally get why retail in a lab building is, is a challenge. Like that, that makes sense. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm doing the compare and contrast between the original SDP and what we have now. And there's a lot to the intent of the SDP beyond simply the numbers in the spreadsheet. It's the lines on the plan, it's the clear intent of this as a true urban core. And I, you know, in full, you know, full transparency, my hangup looking at this is we've got a suburban lab campus that's basically absorbing one half of an urban core. And so, you know, without, without a corresponding SDP for the northern half, you have a, a, amended SDP that has a very sort of, you know, schizophrenic planning feel to it. You've got a town center, you know, multiple building mixed use on the north. You cross this grand public square, you've got, you know, the lab spaceship that has dropped down from suburbia onto the, under the, you know, the west side of it. And so I'm trying to, in my head, mesh those two together and it's not working.
It's a good point. I mean, it was, it was such an almost pure TOD diagram before, but it's really kind of gone now. But, um, um, I mean, in my mind, it's, um, uh, I share your thought. When I first saw it, I was like, oh, that's too bad. We had grand hopes. But, uh, but I think responding to the market here, uh, could, could be okay. It just puts an enormous burden on this yellow box, right? To sort of make a place. So it's, um, you know, from an SDP standpoint, it would have been nice to sort of have some idea of what's planned, uh, but I think pushing, uh, to be clear, pushing, uh, the retail density back and making sure that, that that yellow box is somehow a town center, uh, is, is going to be tough. It's, it's a relatively small footprint comparatively and, uh, it's going to be, it's going to need some creative, it's going to need some dollars and some creative design to happen, so it's a real challenge.
What's the number of employees projected for that site, for, for your site?
Uh, we, we generally see, you know, two and a half to three employees per thousand square feet. So, you know, that would be, um, about 2,000 people.
I think that was true. Last half, I said, uh, one and a half per thousand, but that's okay.
My, you know, my, my, I'm a little more optimistic, I think, than some of my, um, compatriots here, and that is that I think something like this would add impetus to creating a more urban core. If you've got 1,000 to 2,000 employees plopping down on another side of the, of the tracks, I think gives more impetus to developers to have more restaurants and, and more urban kind of outlets, because that would give them the mix during the afternoon, during the daytime, as opposed to just the evening. So you've got a 24/7 basically going on here. You've got people getting off the train, you've got people going to the, to the labs and you've got people living nearby. And I think, uh, I'm just more optimistic. I think this is, this project would probably spur on the urban core.
Don't disagree with that at all. I think, yeah, the, the pressure on the architecture becomes enormous.
And dollar figures, it's going to be expensive though. The yellow box is going to, it's going to need a lot of care.
Yeah, and, and, you know, my, I know we're at an SDP level, but the renderings we saw with the facade and the, you know, sort of panels in front of glazing along a, what are you, 200-foot long per building ballpark?
Full block, full block.
It is, you know, it reminds me of some of the, the gems from the 60s and 70s along Independence Avenue downtown, right?
Some of the things that I put up 25 years ago that are now being ripped down.
Yeah, and so like picturing this, that in my head when I'm picturing a town center to the, to the east and that wall to the south, like the, the architecture is going to have to be worked on. And I'm concerned with the comments about needing to make this a very cost-effective and economical facade, that you're going to run headlong into expectations at the next phase for what the architecture looks like. So fair warning.
Yeah, and, and knowing that we up here understand the idea of the repetitive nature of precast and all the rest of that stuff, so it puts a lot of pressure on that one piece of precast. Uh, so I, I think, uh, I think I'm with Lloyd in saying I'm angst-ridden to give up on our beautiful TOD little diagram, right? Uh, but understanding the forces of the market the way they are, uh, this, this is a, a wonderful seed, or a big, big seed, to, to hopefully build out the rest of this. But there's a tremendous amount of pressure on the remaining land, undeveloped land and on staff and the rest of us to make sure that that urban core, the future mixed-use urban core, uh, picks up the slack that, that this, I'll agree, this suburban, you know, office park, as nice as it's going to be, um, has left on the table. So, uh, the thing that you can do obviously is what we were starting to talk about, which is create this nice pedestrian, you know, way to get through these two blocks essentially, the garage and the buildings themselves, so that we can create some connection there so you can flow back and forth.
So to, to clarify, are you giving thought that we actually have pedestrians have the ability to go through the buildings?
So there's, there's a bunch of solutions. The easiest one, obviously, looking at a 200-plus long building with a notch in it and a stair tower on the exact opposite side of the street, is have a via through there. Yeah. That's, yeah, cause that's, that's dumb, sitting at the D S, haven't designed it, but, but that seems pretty obvious.
No, I appreciate that. I think what my colleague Bill was trying to acknowledge and, and we do this again all, all throughout the, the U.S., uh, these are very intense buildings built for users that we haven't determined their needs yet, for security, for control, for access. And, um, they're very fickle users, they're very demanding, and, um, and they're one, it's one where there's a great deal of interest in the site relevant to the importance of Gaithersburg to the larger I-270 ecosystems, so we're all aware of that. We have a sense of who these users will be, uh, and likewise what their demands will be, what demands will be required relevant to security, access, controlled access. And likewise, I acknowledge that the power that they'll have on the overall impact, because they'll be high consumers. They will be demanding of the right type of retail. They'll be demanding of the right type of housing and likewise the right type of amenities. So all of that's quite positive. Uh, but it's one that I think we will have to give thought to how you allow the building to be, um, accessed internally to the public is a tough one, if, if I'm understanding your comment correctly.
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh, uh, you know, you don't have to have a front door into your tenants from that, from that via, but, uh, it's a great place to exit out of those stairs. You're going to have, you know, it's, it's, I don't know what your cores look like, but I'm sure, uh, they, they can become useful and your architect can, can take advantage of that via, but having the ability to get through there, and I'm not saying open a door, go into your space, come out another door, right? So you're, you're not breaking the security in any way, shape or form. If you're proposing a fence goes up around this thing, we've got to have another conversation. So it's.
No, no.
We know these users too, I guess, is part of my point. And I think, and I think we, uh, you know, really do understand how sensitive they are. Uh, however, I'm positive you're on the right train here and putting up a spec, you know, putting up a spec building on this, on this site is going to be a big hit. So, uh, part of, the only thing it might be missing is some kind of integration. And part of that to me is the pedestrian path through to what will end up being the town center.
Sure, will certainly challenge our design team. I think the, some of the constraints that we have relevant to the, 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 the nature of the site, um, is how you provide loading and utility-supported infrastructure. So the moment that you start trying to break these buildings apart, you, you lose that ability to efficiently provide back-of-house, uh, supply corridors, which are critically important to the efficiency of these.
You have to put a little bit of urban design into a suburban building, minor amount. Yeah, I agree. It, it's an additional challenge, I agree.
It's, um.
You can still do it with one loading dock and some big double doors.
I do want to make sure we, uh, give the public a chance to comment. I don't believe if there's anyone here other than staff and applicant's team, but Greg, is there anybody dialed in on the Zoom?
You may want to run the video.
Yep. Tech, tech team, can you run the, uh, video for folks who may want to join in from home and provide comment?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
We currently have no one with their hand raised.
All right. Um, if, if anyone, uh, we'll keep watching the Zoom for, for another few minutes. If anyone at home listening does want to provide commentary or testimony, please click the button and we'll, Greg will keep an eye on it and we'll bring you over.
One person did just raise their hand.
All right.
I think they're bringing them over right now. I think they are available unmuted. They could say their name, please.
If you could please state your name and, uh, where you live for the record and, and provide us your thoughts.
Hi, my name is Sean Carr. It's here, I live in the Watkins Mill neighborhood, uh, directly adjacent to the plan, uh, or the, the property that's being discussed today. Um, I just wanted to get a sense of ETA. When are we thinking about breaking gra- breaking ground? Uh, this is my first time into one of these, these types of forums, so, uh, apologies for the, uh, potentially null of this question here, but, uh, what, what, is there a, a sense of timing as to when, um, uh, construction would start, uh, in that red zone, I believe was red in the picture? Uh, and any guidance there would be really helpful. Thanks.
All right, I, just to be clear, the, the red zone is not the development portion we're speaking about tonight?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, sorry, it is, sorry. I had it backwards. All right, do you want to comment on the?
Yeah, uh, so we would anticipate breaking ground sometime in 2024, hopefully in the first half of the year. We've got to go through site plan and, and then to the design of the buildings, so.
Okay. All right. And it's a two-year delivery?
Uh, yes, we work with the logistics plan with Clark, uh, who are intended to use as a general contractor and we think would be right around two years.
Any other questions, comments from? Did you, anyone from the applicant have anything else?
No, just thank you for everyone's time.
Yeah, thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
So staff's recommendation at this time is to, uh, hold our, uh, hold our record open until 5:00 PM on October 13th, 2022, 36 days with final action anticipated on October 9th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, motion carries 3-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just to remind everyone listening, um, they can write in an email to the city. Um, the email address is jasmine dot forms at gaithersburg MD dot go.
And is there, is there a project page on the city's website for this one?
Yes, there is a project page, um, on the city website for this application.
So any additional testimony can be, be written in and provided to staff and it'll be provided to the commission for their consideration.
Great.
And, and please do so because at our next meeting, the record will have closed at the time of our next meeting, so we won't be taking public testimony at our next hearing. So if you have things to add, uh, we'd love to hear from you in writing. All right, that takes us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Takes us to, from the commission. Lloyd?
School's open, just be careful out there, watch the kids and, uh, be alert and be aware.
All right, nothing from you?
Oh, I will add something, sorry. Mr. Tonight's Chair, the, um, uh, speaking of schools, so it's Lloyd's fault, but, uh, the, the, the new school over at Kelly Park is, uh, Harry Tubman Elementary School.
Yep.
Uh, what, what a great sort of in-use, uh, sort of reuse of the parking lot and, uh, you know, right up against that, uh, watershed there. It's, um, just incredibly well-planned. It's a wonderful boon to the neighborhood. Uh, the new soccer field is.
And they kept their fields.
Beautiful. Yeah, and, um, uh, you know, twice the playgrounds we had before. It's just gorgeous and, uh, and being the guy who walks his dog twice a day right through the middle of that school, um, uh, the walking trails are great. Uh, they always were, but now they're even better. And so thanks you to the city for working with MCPS and, and, um, uh, just so happy to have that much investment in our little neighborhood, so it's great.
This is to, from staff, John?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Phil. I have a couple of updates, uh, this evening. We continue to work with WRS and the consultants on the Lake Forest rezoning and sketch plan. Still not filed, uh, but we have a meeting tomorrow and, uh, we do anticipate filing within, I would say, a month to six weeks. Um, and that's, again, that's the first step, that's the rezoning and sketch plan. weeks. And that's, again, that's the first step. That's the rezoning and sketch plan. We also, there will be a resolution approving the contract to negotiate with ZoneCo, which is for the zoning rewrite, and that's going before the council on September 19th. So that's moving forward. We had, Greg and Rob had a good meeting today with ZoneCo, and we'll hope to wrap that up very soon.
Let's wait.
And that's it.
Frank?
Actually, I don't have anything special, but I think we wanted to talk about the updated rules of procedure. But Greg, before we do that, did you have anything?
No, just, so we have recently gone through and relooked at the rules of procedure for the planning commission. The main reason we meant that that change was about swearing in at witnesses, not related to public meetings. But we also took the opportunity to make other revisions, minor revisions, including some housekeeping cleanups, updates to the meeting locations to remove any references in anticipation of the new meeting across the way from City Hall, obviously. And then replacing any reference to the planning division chief to move division, sorry, the director of planning and co-administration or designate. So again, all minor changes. Again, the main one change was obviously to add anything about swearing in. But if there's any questions, Frank and I are both available to answer them. We do need a motion to approve the new rules of procedure of our resolution.
Have you figured out operationally how we're going to swear everybody in?
Actually, the, generally speaking, if the rules don't speak to that, the chair does that. That can be designated to, I know the HTC right now is using the attorney. If you want me to do that, I can also do that. The, it does not require testimony like tonight necessarily, doesn't necessarily require, isn't necessarily required for the public hearing, but the rule change would say testimony would be under oath. So certainly, if there's a contested hearing, then it should be. The point of, of that is not simply to say, oh, everybody who speaks orally has to be under oath. The point is that to provide a measure of substantial evidence, if there was an appeal and there was reliance in your decision on the written testimony, because that way, if, if there isn't anything sworn, it could raise a question. We did see some cases where that was a question. The past decisions we've had really didn't become an issue because the oral testimony was not necessarily that critical, but just on the chance that it would be, that is why. So it's really not a dramatic change, but does specify if we do have a hearing. What we've sometimes had are questions or concerns, and that should be fine. But when you know that the, okay, we're going to have opposition on both sides, perhaps somebody's asking for the right to cross-examine. At that point, it probably would make sense. And to some extent, that would be either for staff or, or me as counsel to recommend that folk should be sworn.
So is there any change to the language that we need in order to, you know, have alternate swearers in?
That can be, that certainly could be done, but sometimes we look at this and say, well, sometimes having the discretion to decide. But generally speaking, when you look at who does the swearing in, it's generally the chair. So, but, but, and the chair can say, well, would counsel be willing, or even Greg and, you know, whoever is designated can proceed with that.
Never seen that on a legal document.
What's that?
I'm teasing you about the, the language, Frank. But usually maybe, kind of, isn't really. But, but we get it. I get it. Yeah.
Well, it is, it's not specified in the document as far as who does, just to follow the rule that, that it's the, usually would be the chair, but the chair would have the discretion to designate other ones.
Okay.
So we kept it simple. There was also another change. There were some original rules, and I'm not sure where they came from, because I looked at past drafts and we weren't sure, but just laying out the powers of the alternate member, and it was a bit more restrictive than it needed to be. The, the change to the rules simply clarifies that on purely regulatory matters, if, if the alternate is not sitting as a commission member, yes, that would be restricted, but for recommendations, deciding officers and such that the, that the alternate is intended to and could certainly vote as much as anybody else.
Minutes, recommendations, not consent or...
Right. And I believe Greg did capture, as I go through, I'm looking at a, I'm looking at it and track changes. It looks like your description, there are probably a dozen, maybe eight or nine, minor changes like that, clarification and...
The, the changes to the alternate is what really jumped out at me. I mean, things like text amendments and recommendations on, you know, changing ordinances and regulation to things that we had excluded alternates from the past. So.
And that, and the language now is consistent with what is done for the other commissions, and those I did have a hand in in doing. So there really should be, there's no reason for, for that to be changing from one commission to another.
So are you looking for a motion this evening to adopt those?
Yes, a motion to adopt the updated rules of procedures.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consider them adopted.
Thank you. And then last, just a reminder, the next meeting is September 21st.
All right. Nothing else? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.